Before the regular meeting, the Upshur County Commission to order will begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the September 26, 2013 Upshur County Commission meeting. Morning Jackie.
Good morning. County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, September 26, 2013. At 9:00 a.m., Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Jennifer Dinklo, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. All motions passed unanimously and not less otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of September 12, 2013, as submitted. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of September 19, 2013, as submitted. Craig Presar, West Virginia University Extension Service Representative, appeared before the Commission on behalf of Upshur County C.E.O.S., the Community Educational Outreach Service, and reviewed the Breast Cancer Awareness Day proclamation which encourages women to be proactive with potentially life-saving exams. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the proclamation designating October 7, 2013, as West Virginia Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 2013 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month throughout Upshur County. Joyce Harris Thacker, Director of the Upshur County Family Resource Network, and Alicia Rapking, Director of Parish House, appeared before the Commission and presented the Crop Hunger Walk proclamation. The proclamation encourages participation in support of the fundraising walk which helps local food pantries. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved and authorized the Commission to sign the proclamation which designates October 6, 2013, as Crop Hunger Walk Day in Upshur County. Jennifer Dinklo provided an update/status report on the discussion concerning the taxable fringe benefit on life insurance coverage provided by the county on amounts over $50,000. Currently, the coverage is two times the employee's annual salary. Ms. Dinklo advised that the consensus of surveyed employees is to provide all county employees and elected officials with life insurance in the amount of $50,000. The change will save about $5,000 per year for the county and facilitate easier record keeping. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the change. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the reappointment of Glenn Davis to the Upshur County Fire Board. Mr. Davis' term will expire June 30, 2016. Jennifer Dinklo provided a review of the Governor's Community Participation Grant Project Number 12, LEDA 0223, in the amount of $2,000 for the benefit of the Upshur County Literacy Volunteers. The grant period is July 1, 2011 through July 30, 2013, with extension through June 30, 2014, and will be used for office supplies and equipment. Jennifer Dinklo provided a review of the West Virginia Wesleyan College Community Service Federal Work-Study Program Agreement. The Work-Study Program is a 2575 match program to employ students in community service work. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved and authorized Megan Palmeroy to sign the ACE and Community Partner Memorandum of Agreement. Jerry Kimball, Upshur County resident, expressed concerns about addressing software readability as related to fire departments. Software formatting and insurance problems have been encountered. The county and city of Buchanan are trying to work through the problems in order to provide all county and city fire departments and agencies with the ability to share addressing and mapping information. Donnie Tenny reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, agendas and/or notices of meetings as listed. Number two, meeting minutes and/or financial reports; there were none. Number three, meetings as listed. Number four, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. Terry Joe Bennett, Addressing and Mapping Coordinator, appeared before the Commission and reviewed road name requests. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the following road names. Private driveway located off of Frenchson Road. Briar Ridge Lane, private drive located in Briar Ridge Estates Development. LLC off of the Gormley Road. 13th Lane, private drive located in Briar Ridge Estates Development. LLC off Gormley Road. This lane, private drive located in Briar Ridge Estates Development off of Gormley Road. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the following road names. Countryside Drive, private drive located in Countryside Estates off of Phillips Dairy Road. Goose Lane, private drive located in Briar Ridge Estates Development off of the Gormley Road. And Valley Lane, private drive located in Briar Ridge Estates Development. LLC off of the Gormley Road. Terry Joe Bennett received correspondence from Jerry Arnold, City of Buchanan Representative, advising the Commission of a new center line named/name and structure address within the corporation limits. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission approved the road name of Fado Lane. Ms. Bennett advised the Commission and city representatives that this road name does not have direct -- that this road name does have direct conflict with existing locations in Upshur County. And there's a note, since the city of Buchanan maintains -- exists -- maintains their own addressing and mapping within the corporation limit, Commission action is only required so that it can be added to the addressing and mapping project. Ms. Bennett advised that a private driveway has been identified that requires a road name for the E-911 Addressing and Mapping Ordinance, and further advised that notification was sent to all property owners, but no response was received. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved Backfield Drive for the private driveway located off of the old Alkins Road. Jennifer Dinklo provided an update/status report on Jack Lane Neighbor's dog complaint. The Doberman has been surrendered by the owner and is waiting for placement in a new home. Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Center Director, appeared before the Commission to discuss staffing issues. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved all -- approved the following settlements as listed. The Commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. The Commission approved the following request for time out of office as listed. The Commission reassessed at 11:20 a.m. The Commission reconvened at 1:00 p.m. David Durasio and Robert Aha Johnson Controls Representatives appeared before the Commission and provided an update/status report concerning the preliminary energy audit slash analysis. Mr. Durasio advised that the most significant savings would be at the library in the courthouse annex building and made recommendations concerning the rooftop cooling unit, but noted that in some areas, the savings may not be enough to justify entering into a performance contract. Donnie Tenny requested that Mr. Durasio submit a report with a breakdown of areas and recommendations for each. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the Commission meeting adjourned at 1:45 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Not, I'd ask for a motion to be approved as such.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Thank you Jackie. Okay.
Seven o'clock.
It's seven o'clock. It's five after seven.
We started with eight.
What happened Megan?
I put a new battery in. I don't know.
Yeah, I think it's --
It's dead.
Okay. Well, we've got about our next appointment of Dale Bennett from Bennett Surveying. We have about 12 minutes according to my watch.
Yes.
According to that one, we have several hours Dale, but.
I've got 20 minutes to wait on you.
Okay. Well, we're going down through some of our other business to take care of. First being appointment of fire -- county fire association member Joseph Malcolm, the second. Are you the second, or is that the second district?
No, I'm not because it doesn't matter.
Second District Upshur County Fire Board pursuant to West Virginia Code 7 Day 17 Day 6. You're in agreeance of that Joe?
Yeah.
A hearty yes from Joe. We have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Oh, seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Welcome board again Joe. Okay, discussion and action. Vote on trick-or-treat time for the county when the city is October 31st from 6 to 7, and the Moose has an event afterward. And in years past, I think Stockard has some kind of an event for Friday night, but I'm not sure if that's maybe another time, but anyway. I believe what we've done in the past is we've mirrored the cities.
Did you not extend it an hour?
Did we extend it an hour?
I think it's been extended an hour in the county, if I'm not mistaken.
It has been?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was like, whatever the city is, the county extends it, opens it the same time.
Half an hour later?
An hour later, I thought it was, in the county.
Well, it's --
It's the past practice.
I guess 6 to 7, I think the only -- 7 it'll be, won't be quite dark. I don't know. Whatever you guys want to do. I mean, I think.
It's always been extended in the past. I don't know the time, whether half hour or an hour, but maybe a half hour would be.
Well, half an hour won't be. At 7:30, it's at this point, still light. That might be.
Does Stockard Youth Center have something going on on that Friday?
Well, I'm not sure. They usually have something, but it may be actually on Saturday, I'm not sure, but.
Because usually the weekend is better for the parents and kids.
Yeah. So, well, do we want to, do we want to go from 6 to 7:30 in the county? Is that what we're saying?
I would so move.
Would you so second?
I will.
Okay.
I guess if Friday's not an option.
Well, I think, you know, it's like, you don't celebrate Christmas the 27th, but you just have to do it at a certain right time where the op-goldens aren't out. Two days later, they're going back to roost for the next year. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign.
Very fortunate, because I was listening to the radio this morning, and at some location in Pennsylvania, the school board has canceled Halloween party for the school, designated Halloween was, had too many religious connotations. Parents are rather upset.
Kids probably upset.
I know the kids are upset too.
Oh, they had free candy then.
But they'll have a fall, but two weeks before Thanksgiving, they'll have a fall party.
Ball party.
Wish they can wear their costumes.
There you go. Okay. Okay. Next item is resignation of County Commission Administrative Assistant Kimberly Taylor effective Monday, September 30, 2013. And on page one, we have a email. She emailed Jennifer.
She did, yeah. She emailed just noting that she had personal reasons.
Okay.
Okay.
Did she indicate, I'm sorry, did she indicate the willingness to have a exit interview, or were you --
I did. I left her voicemail at one point, asked her if she'd be interested, and we have not heard back.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept Kimberly's resignation?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Next item, employment of part-time County Commission Administrative Assistant, rate of $8 per hour.
And that's just to post the advertisement for the same position.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Let's look for a new Kimberly.
And hope she stays longer.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to advertise?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Next item is review and approval of financing for sheriff vehicles on page two.
And that's just a little something I typed up so you'd have something to look at based on the paperwork we have. I've talked to Connie at Progressive Bank. The loan payment for the first year would be about $20,000, and they have that amount in a capital LA fund. So, just the basic dollar amounts and everything.
Any questions or comments? One thing, the electronic installation, is that the lights and all that?
Yes.
Is that just the changing of all the equipment from the old crews, is new, or is that new?
I believe that's new. I can, I can double check on that and see if they're just moving, but I don't think so. I think that's actually installing new. There's antennas, there's the light bar, hideaway LEDs. Buddy might have a better idea what some of those things are than I do, but all, all of the hardware and, you know, lights and everything that go into the vehicles. And we have financed that through the loan in the past, so that's just kind of wrapped into it for each one.
Okay. I was just curious if we reused any of the lights?
I can double check.
From time to time. Well, I mean, this is in the budget, so I was just curious about that.
Yeah.
So, do we have a motion to approve the purchasing of?
Has, has they checked under locations for pricing on these vehicles, like Jenkins Ford or anybody local here?
I think this is a state contractor.
Yes, this is a state contractor. Stevens Auto Center, it's a state contract. And actually, they, we are still currently paying on another Ford Tourist, which is a couple thousand dollars more than what this one is. So, compared to the other cars that we're still paying on right now, these prices are fairly low. So, I'm not sure. I know this is a state contractor, I don't know how much they did to compare that to other locations, but I think that we can purchase through the state contractor.
I think we had this issue before raised, and I think under state law, you had to have three different dealerships supply, make bids, and that nobody followed through making a bid locally anyway.
For the state contract.
For the state contract, yeah.
I just think that we probably ought to give local business owners here a chance at least to quote us a price. I know once they was within $100 of matching state contract, and when you've got businesses here, you know, man, that pays a lot of taxes, at least they should be asked. My opinion.
And I, you know, I don't know off the top of my head whether that did occur or not, but I can follow up and check if you like.
Well, I think the, I think the methodology there and the, and the means of doing that very thing is the bid on the state contract. Because what that does, that gives all your auto dealers the opportunity to say, okay, this, this is the price that I would sell a vehicle for. And that way, you don't have, it saves a lot of time and a lot of expense in getting separate bids, because whoever gets a state contract is the lowest price statewide for vehicles.
And if I'm not mistaken, I might be mistaken, but I believe, I've been told in the past that the preparation for the vehicle and everything can be at any dealership where the vehicle is sent, and so occasionally, not just the state contractor, but other dealerships can prep, do some preparation work for the vehicle, which is an expense involved in it.
And I know a lot of times dealers can't compete with state contract price. I do know one time Jenkins Ford turned in a quote for a Ford pickup truck which Marshall Pires was driving, was within $100 of state contract. And I thought, since he's a local businessman here, you know what I mean, and pays taxes here, that we should have bought the truck off of him.
Well, we certainly can check with the sheriff and see, have him to get a quote, local quote, on the comparable vehicle, and see what, where that comes. So, we could approve the purchase, asking him to do that.
I have no problem approving the purchase.
Right.
We'd like our local dealerships to be checked on price.
Right. I agree.
And if they can't compete or don't want to put in a bid, then I have no problem.
We've given them the opportunity. Well, we can ask the sheriff to, if he hasn't done that, to do that, and we'll approve the purchase with that request then. Okay, so do we have a motion then? Does that affect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. And we have review and approval of Upshur County Commission FY 2013 financial statements.
And that's just our financial statements for the last fiscal year.
And we still have some money left to spend, right?
We do.
Okay, that's good. Okay, now we have review and approval requests from Buchanan Upshur High School, Pep rally October the 10th, 2013, from 6:30 to 7 at the courthouse. Now, a question that Deborah Shapiro asked me last night, do we have outside electrical outlets, or what?
I've talked to Greg about that, and he said that he has microphones that he can set up for them. I know that he is able to, I don't know if they're located on the outside of the building or inside, but he's able to get electricity out there to the podium.
Okay.
For microphone speakers, whatever.
And to plug in, because they're going to have, she said Bobby Stell, they need something to plug in for his electronic equipment, so.
Yeah.
Greg will have someone here, he knows the timing and everything on that.
Yeah, I've talked to him this morning. I can let him know if they need more than just the microphone and speakers.
They'll need a place to plug in some electricity for, I'm not sure whether Bobby's going to be emceeing it, and if that's, he'll be using his equipment or not, but I, I have her number, if he, if he needs to contact her and get the specific information of what their needs are.
Okay. And I've been in contact with Sarah Wamsley, who's a student council advisor, and she's actually the one that contacted me with their request, so I guess they're getting, they're having a homecoming parade and everything.
Right.
So, I kind of wanted to end up here.
Right. So, okay.
Remember, we received a invitation, the Commission received invitation to attend the Queen's coronation at 10 o'clock this morning at the high school. And unfortunately, because of the press business that we do on Thursdays, we will not be able to attend that particular function.
We've got a half an hour. We hurry.
But we look forward to the parade and the other ceremony at the courthouse.
I believe she said they were like 30 or 30-some floats or entities or items that'll be in the parade, so it's going to be a pretty good little parade, so. Anyway, okay, well, first thing we need.
That's at 6 o'clock this evening.
6:30.
6:30.
Well, the parade, I think maybe that starts at 6.
6 o'clock.
Right, and then this is, so, we need to approve the request for the use of the courthouse this evening. Do we have a motion to that affect?
So moved.
Second.
Does our liability insurance cover if anybody gets hurt there?
I actually already requested and have received a certificate of liability insurance from the Board of Education, so we're good that way.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. Okay, so we are down to 9:30, and we have Dale Bennett from Bennett Surveying, quick claim deed for a paper street in Upshur County. Dale, if you'd like to step up to the podium there.
Good morning to everyone.
Good morning Dale.
I wish the pleasure to see you. You too, lady. Give you copy of what we're going to request.
Oh, thank you Dale.
I knew you guys would pay.
If you just had one.
It's color coded too.
Yeah. That fancy stuff. Oh, some more.
What we propose is the same thing basically what we had done for the Commission with, I don't know if you remember, Mona Anglin in the, well, I'm sure Donnie does.
Upper Tenerton.
Everybody else wasn't there.
Right.
We did the same thing with Mona Anglin in the Valley Glass Edition up in next to Tenerton. What it was, it was a street that property owner owned on both sides of it, and it'd never been used. It's a paper street, never been used at any point in time, and the property owner owned on both sides, and only one it benefits is as per that property owner, no one else is involved with it. And what it was before, Mrs. Anglin had petitioned the Commission in order to get that closed with a quick claim deed to her. Basically, that's what we're proposing today on this one. The, it's a part of the Buchanan Land Trust Association, which the lots was done 1893. But since 1893, there hasn't been a street there, probably won't be one there tomorrow. It's called Webster Street, is the actual street name that is referred to, which probably no one knows that name, because it's never ever been used. Greenbrier and his wife Almond owned property on all sides of it, as depicted there on the plat that I gave you, that was recently surveyed this month. So, basically what he's proposing, we have a, it's where the Allegheny Methodist Church used to be. There's a building there, it's next to the Shawnee Drive area, right behind your city park is the area. We did also a survey there in 2004 for the Almonds, which was a part of the city, and I did the exact same thing when I petitioned the city back in 2004. And the city was the same thing, they had never used those streets in there before, and I can show you, it's on a larger, larger plat. Tax map doesn't do, if I didn't bring it to you, doesn't, between the justice, Edgewater really. As per tax mapping, it shows that Dr. Greenbrier would own north of the Webster Street. Well, he does, but in fact, his property actually incorporates a part of Webster, which is in the county. The northern portion of that is all in the city. You can see other streets in there, the Boone Street and several other streets, Academy Street, all those were a portion of the city, and that's why we petitioned the city to do a quick claim deed, the exact same thing as what we're doing with you. There's going to be some possible future development there at the Wesleyan area. He owns four different lots within that little area, so, you know, basically, we're doing the same thing, like I said. The same thing we did for the Mona Anglin is requesting a quick claim deed for that portion, well, the whole portion of Webster Street. Like I said, it's never been used since 1893, and it's all a paper street in there. Basically, all those alleys that you see, if you pull the plat on the 1893 BLTA addition, none of those lots has been, or none of the streets or alleys has been open. Everything's still paper up there, with the exception of Academy Street, which goes on top of the hill. So, basically, that's what our request is, is to get a quick claim deed for the Academy Street, which is a paper street.
Any questions? So, basically, with it the way it is now, it's just, who does it belong to now?
The county? The, the only one that we can have loved that we can petition in order to get a quick claim deed for, like I say, it was laid out in 1893. Granted, the way it should have went, they should have either dedicated those things to the county, or what you do today, you dedicate it to the city or dedicate it to the county for public usage. This one was just a map that was laid out, it was surveyed out in the plat, and nothing was ever actually dedicated to the city or the county.
So, it's just basically on the map?
So, it's just basically on the map. What it means to us today is if that is conveyed in a quick claim, then we get taxes paid on a street that's never ever been used, and never ever, any money that's ever actually came back into the county or the city.
Does it even appear there's a street there after all these years?
There's a paper street on the map, but as far as an actual area that you can look out and there's a street, no, there's nothing over there.
Looks like it's an extension of adjoining property and other.
There's no differentiation of anything. As a matter of fact, as per the street line, or as per the property line to the north of Ms. Almond's, there's a tree line that goes down through what would be so-called Webster Street, as depicted on the larger map. So, there, there's a big, large tree line of trees that's 24 inches wide that's within a so-called street area.
And that which was possibly a property line?
Yeah, yes. The tree line was the actual property line, irrelevant to what was laid out as per that plat of the streets.
Right.
Yeah, that was, like I say, the, that's why I didn't bring you a tax map. Tax map doesn't depict anything like that. That's, Dr. Almond owns on one side of the Academy Street through there, and nothing like that's depicted on tax map, but his property actually does do that.
Yeah.
And as far as his property line, like I say, the, the tree line is there, doesn't depict a street line. The tree line that's there is his property line, but it's out into the street area. So, there's never ever been a street, it's never ever been used, and basically, since he owns. since he owns the hill portion, as well as the lots now with the old Wesleyan Methodist Church area, there's possible great development there, going to be something happening there at that area, so that's why we request a quick claim deed from you in order to, as such, purchase, and a quick claim deed, that 50-foot street, or 50-foot area that goes all the way back to the remainder of his property.
Megan, you have a question?
Do you have a copy of the deed for the adjoining property there, of the, who owns that property?
I didn't bring it on the tax map, there's a portion of it shown on the BLTA map.
But you don't have like the, the actual deed of the property owners around there?
Oh, I have all the deeds just.
Okay.
Anytime, anytime you see one of the plats that we do, we do title search on all of the, all the deeds around, you just can't do a property like most people think we can. You do title on all the adjoining. Get a copy also of the quick claim deed that was done in 2005, and it was, which is basically the same thing we were requesting.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you'd like a copy of all the deed, we can furnish you with a copy of the deeds or.
And as in this case, the Almonds then own on both sides?
Yes, yes, Almonds own on all sides of that area. Like I say, if you look at the tax map that you're, that I highlighted there in the purple, basically, that's what we're interested in. Tax map doesn't depict that as per real property line like it should. But as you see on the survey map, you can see that the property line of Ms. Almond's to the north is within the Webster Street boundary, as per depicted on that 1893 plat.
So this, this line that goes through that street designates the part of it that's in the city and the part of it's in the county?
No, no, what we're talking about, all of ours on this particular map is all within the county.
Oh, okay, okay, there was, oh, okay, I see, the other you're talking about is
On, on your tax map, if you see on the tax map, that's where they depict the imaginary corporation lawn.
Okay.
But all of Webster Street is within the county's jurisdiction.
I would think that we probably want copies of the deeds, just to make sure that there are no other property owners in that area that might be affected by that.
Well, yeah, there's a process you'll have to go to as far as all property owners have to be notified in that area, or.
Right.
Basically, like I say, it's the same thing as what we did on that Anglin property.
And on that, the process was to notify all the neighboring property, or what's the process you're talking about as far as the neighboring property owners?
Basically, the only one that's affecting is Dr. Greenbrier's.
He's the only one to score through.
As far as property he owns on all sides of it.
But now on hers, she didn't own on all sides, did she?
Yeah.
It was just the edge of her property, but, but there were property owners that butted up against that.
Yes, Mona owned on both sides, she owned two lots on the side, and also the lot on the back. So we had Main Street, and then the actual U Street, then the Paper Street is in the middle of the two lots of hers also, and she owned the one in the back as
So, so it's same situation as far as owning all the way around it?
Yeah, she owned all the way around.
Same as this.
You know, as far as notifying the owners there, and like I say, the only ones that actual border on Webster Street is Dr. Almond's, since he purchased the Wesleyan Methodist Church property. That was owned previously by, it was called the trustees of the Buckhannon Pioneer Wesleyan Methodist Church back in 2004, which he has recently purchased that property, which is now in his name.
And then was the other part, was that a part of his father's property, or is this totally separate?
Yeah, the property to the north was his already, that was, that was Dr. Almond, Dr. Harold Almonds.
Right.
Which he purchased, that, that was done in the 2005. He and his sister separated the property up there at that time, and Dr. Greenbrier became the actual owner adjoining this area.
So the, Megan, with what you're talking about, the neighboring property owners, are you?
Well, I mean, just before you, you know, make a decision, I think we'd wanna make sure that there are no other interests, and I mean, I'm sure you're correct, but I would just want copies of the deeds showing that there are no other property owners in that area that might be affected by it, make sure that there, you know, that we have the deeds for that property around there, notify anybody else that might wanna be notified about it, see if we need to have a hearing or anything. But just do, you know, make sure that we have all the information that we need before we make a final decision.
Okay, you understand what she's requesting?
Pardon?
Do you understand what she's requesting?
Sure.
Okay, okay.
Did you have me to furnish you with all those deeds?
Well, if, you said you have them, if, I mean, if you have them.
I have the adjoining John Hull deed, and I have the adjoining Lauren Kern's deed, which is the only two that's, that's relevant to my work.
Okay, that would be great.
But I can get to those, yeah, that's.
Okay, so, you all have any other questions?
No, I do not.
I do.
You don't?
No.
So, then, Megan, are you, are you recommending that we don't approve, do we get those, or approve at pending, getting those and make sure there's no issue, or what you're?
Well, I mean, this is just the first I've heard of it, so I, you know, I would like to do a little bit more, get a little more information, you know, make sure that we, you can have the right to do a quick claim deed. I mean, it looks like we do, but just make sure that we have all the information we need before doing that.
Well, if you get that to her, then we can put it on next week's agenda.
Oh, yeah, there's a several, it's a lengthy process to get it done.
Yeah, okay, well, let's do that, and then that way, we follow in our due diligence and.
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you Dale.
Thank you.
Thank you Dale.
Thank you.
Did we approve the financial statement? I'm not sure we did that.
I don't think you did, no.
Okay, well.
You do have to sign all, all of them, though.
Okay, so let's, do we have a motion to approve the financial statement presented?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, next is review and approval of Upsher County Justice Assistance Grant Award Project 13, JAG 27, $27,000 for a period of July 1, 13th through June 30, 14. It's a renewal of an existing grant, same amount, is it the same amount we've been getting?
Yes.
Okay, any questions on it? If not, I'd ask for a motion to approve and authorize the president to sign any and all documents pertaining to the grant.
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next item is approval of Division of Justice to Community Services revoked grant, request for reimbursements, you'd like to go over that?
This is just a routine reimbursement request that we have to sign for the revoked grant.
That we're asking for reimbursement?
Right, yeah, I think it's a monthly thing that we do.
Okay, okay, just.
Just a part of that grant.
Normal part of doing business. Do we have a motion then that we approve this and authorize the president to sign any and all documents for this reimbursement?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next item, approval of trained cert members, OEM volunteers, Wayne Ford, Douglas Wade, Annette McDonald-How, Becky Grog, the Tonam, yes, Strother, Amanda Harmon, and Nancy Gerlach. I probably butchered some of those, but anyway, we need to approve these.
They attended a 16-hour class over four evenings, two nights, Tuesday and Thursday nights, two weeks in, back-to-back, and attended and received instruction in that program. So I would move that we.
They've met all the qualifications?
Met all the qualifications.
Okay, and you were making a motion?
Yes, I am.
Moving, and Buddy, are you seconding?
I'm seconding.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. And we have review and approval for ride-along requests from Danny Elwood Stump, Jr. at Aldridge County EMS.
This is something that the sheriff brought up recently, and I don't know when the last time there was, if we've ever done ride-alongs before, but it's something that the risk pool or insurance group frowns upon, you know, we try not to have any outside individuals in our shared cruisers, if at all possible, because it decreases liability, and a waiver doesn't necessarily cover all of that. So it's something that our risk pool frowns upon, the sheriff brought it up because he hadn't approached, I believe, so.
And this is a minor?
I'm sorry?
This is a minor?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Well, it says, oh, it says aye, parent or guardian?
Yeah, I think he, I think that was a mistake.
Oh, okay, so, so this individual's over 18?
Yes, I believe he may work for an EMS.
Yeah, an indicator, Dodgers County EMS.
But, I mean, he's not an employee of the county.
Does he live in Upsher County?
I'm sorry?
Does he live in Upsher County, is that why?
He lives in Sandford, West Virginia.
Lives in Sandford, West Virginia. Is that Dodgers, or lives in Sandford? Wonder why they'd wanna ride in, why they wouldn't wanna ride in Dodgers County?
Between Burnsville and clinical, Sandford.
In Dodgers County, pardon?
That's in Gilmer.
Oh, Gilmer County. So he, he works for Dodgers, lives in Gilmer, wants to ride in Upsher.
Well, I, and I question whether or not we can hold ourselves harmless, or can be held, I mean, it's like going into a garage and the sign says, any damage to your car, theft from your car is not responsible for, that doesn't hold up. So I would recommend that we do a little bit more research on this. Is there a time constraint involved here in terms of when the program is supposed to start?
Not that I'm aware of, and I don't, you know, I, I think this is a one-time thing, I don't think that it's.
Like a one-day, or one-evening type?
I believe so, I could be wrong, but I mean, we, we also have a policy in our handbook that says that there should be no outside.
Well, we'll have a meeting later today, I think.
Right, we have a policy for meeting today, so we could talk to the sheriff about this.
Yes, I, I would recommend we hold this in abeyance.
We can do that.
And I agree with Megan, county risk pool has a problem with anybody riding in the vehicle, because you can't sign a waiver and give up the liability. If you get hurt, you've still got options there, so I'm willing not for any ride-alongs.
Now, maybe that a different format, if in the future they wanted to do this, it might be that we can discuss it, but it might be a different format in terms of signing away the liability or holding us harmless, might be developed with the, through the risk pool, if there's a, means that can be done. Because I know that, like, like the city police department has programs for ride-alongs and things of that nature, at least they had in the past, and maybe there's a means by which we can address that satisfactorily so that all parties involved can.
No, we can, we can consult with the risk pool and ask if there's anything we can do that will absolve us from liability. And it's kind of interesting, along these lines, at the, the leadership training in Morgantown, there were some interesting, some interesting information from the Ethics Commission, and one thing that they said was that if a deputy sheriff is driving a cruiser and, and does something while in that cruiser for their personal, it's an ethics violation. That was interesting, but there were some, there were two or three things there that was very interesting that, that she, that she mentioned that was kind of, kind of surprising to me, but.
This is the head of the Ethics Commission.
Right, this is the head of the Ethics Commission, that, so, anyway. Okay, so we're gonna talk to sheriff about that. We have review correspondence, city of Buckhannon Gateway, that's just telling them about streets that'll be closed, and building permit report, dog warden, cat warden report, building permits for September with 767,600 some dollars. Do you have anything else, Megan?
I think that pretty much covers it.
Would gentlemen have anything?
Just at 10 o'clock, ten more minutes, ten more minutes, we have Mr. Robby.
That's right. I might mention, let's see, what was Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, I was at Ogilvy at our West Virginia Association of Counties board meeting and legislative meeting, and the West Virginia Association of Counties is an association that entails all six elected offices, commission, the clerks, prosecutor, assessor, and, and what happens at that meeting in the fall is each one of the groups of elected officials brings their legislative agendas that they're gonna pursue, or in some cases, like the county commission, you know, we usually spend more time fighting against unfunded mandates from the state legislature, where, you know, where they basically say, you have to do this, and we're not gonna give you any money, or, and so it places a greater burden on the taxpayer, and so the county commission association actually spends more time fighting those issues than working for things, although we, we do, we do work for other means of providing funding for, to help pay the regional jail bill. There's always things that, that we look for, for there, but, you know, one of which on those is to make the arresting entities pay for the people they put in jail, because, you know, most people may not know, some may know, but probably most don't know that if the, if the sheriff or deputy arrests somebody, they go into regional jail, and the county pays the regional jail bill. What they may not know, if the city, city or cities, depending on how many's in the county, if they arrest somebody, if the city of Buckhannon arrests somebody and runs them through the, the process, then the county commission pays that regional jail bill. If the West Virginia State Police arrests somebody, then the county, the taxpayers in Upsher County, pay for those people setting in the regional jail bill, and that's getting to be a major concern of counties, there, I think, what was it, Megan, was it three or four or five counties that are, that are behind on the regional jail bill because the cost is so exorbitant. There's some that, that aren't even paying, there's one or two that's not even paying the regional jail bill because it's so, so exorbitant. And, and then along those lines, then there's a lot of counties, just like the state, the state's running behind on their revenues, and they're looking at what they're gonna have to do to cut budgets and cut expenses, and a lot of it's because of coal severance, and coal production's being basically shut down in West Virginia. You know, there's the hope that the natural gas severance will help make up, but the problem is, you know, 90% of your severance is from coal and 10% is from tax, so if the 90% is reduced to 50, that 10% is not gonna be able to make up the difference as far as revenue. Even though there's, there's a lot of gas production in West Virginia, the portion of the coal was so small that it's not gonna be able to make up the difference. So, and along those lines, there's counties that are having to lay people off, there's counties that, you know, are behind on the regional jail bill and other bills, and, and as a result of that, the West Virginia Association of Counties, all the other elected officials voted to support a 20% pay raise for all county elected officials, and the county commission association voted to oppose that. And so that's gonna be interesting to see how that, see how that pans out, especially, you know, in, in effective counties that just can't afford it. And one argument is that the state auditor looks at your budget for next year, and if you have a certain increase in revenues, they say that's the first test that you can give raises if they pass the bill to elected officials. So they say, okay, if your revenue, let's say it costs $125,000 to implement the raises if it's passed, they look at the county's revenues and say, okay, your revenues have increased $125,000, so you can give raises to elected officials. They don't look at the fact that maybe the regional jail bill has increased $200,000, so they don't look at the expense side, they just look at the revenue side, which is not, not a common sense way to do that, but it's gonna be interesting to see how that pans out. Glenn Gaynor was one of our meetings, the state auditor, and he, his advice to counties was, there's a lot of counties hurting, the state's hurting financially, if you're in a county that's fortunate to have some extra money, I'd advise you to put it away and save it, because next year's gonna probably be worse than this year. So. be worse than this year. So, it was, it was a, a very interesting meeting, and, uh, you know, when you have a situation where everybody doesn't always agree on everything, then you, you have to work separately. But, uh, well, we've got about, we've got about two minutes, so let's take a little break and then...
Before we take a break, I'd like to...
Go right ahead, J.C.
I think that it would be appropriate for the commission to recognize, uh, the departure of one of our, uh, news reporters, John Wickline, who represents Cedar Mountain. This is his last day, uh, working, uh, for that organization. He's moving on to other projects. But, uh, I think it's, it's important to recognize the contribution of John, and not only John, but the other reporters, both print and, and, uh, television, uh, contribute to the public awareness and public knowledge of, of the events of government, what government's doing. And I know from my observations the last three years, that I, two and a half years I've served, that John is a good reporter. Uh, he's not always, uh, positive anyways,
Just a factor, I don't...
But he does, he does present a factual basis, uh, and, uh, I believe that, uh, he's done an excellent job. And I know that I will miss him, uh, your presence here. Uh, I enjoy the banner sometimes we have before the, uh, camera stretch roll, but, uh, I wish you the best. I know that Buddy Brady has commented to me the same. I'll let Buddy speak for himself, but...
Yes, John, you will be missed. I think you already heard that on second floor today. We will miss you. I think you've done an outstanding job, reporter.
And I don't know if it's, uh, a good thing or a bad thing, but you know, as I talk to other county commissions, even large counties, they, they don't have, a lot of them don't have any press there. So the fact that we have two and sometimes three papers and a local TV and, and our two, uh, premier TV stations in central West Virginia, five and twelve, um...
Not forget, not to forget the, uh...
That's our local here.
Yeah, local, yeah.
But, you know, we have more than, we have more news cover, media coverage than I think Charleston than the Canola County Commission, so, um, I'll take that as a, I'll take that as a compliment. Uh, and, uh, it, it, uh, the, the, the good thing is, when good news goes out, it goes out faster and, and spreads wider, and if bad news goes out, I guess the same thing happens. But, uh, I think it's a good thing. I think the more press you have, the, the more people know what government's doing and, and the importance of local government. I won't say anything about the state or federal level, but local government, I think, is very important. Because, uh, one wise gentleman said once that all, all government is local. And, um, and I think it's great that we have press, and I, I agree. I think John's done a great job. Amanda does a great job, and J.C.'s always hounding her about stories, so, I mean, she just comes right back, so she defends herself quite well. But, uh, we do appreciate all you guys, and John, we, we wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Sunlight is the best kind of scepter, and you provide the sunlight for the public, and that's the important thing.
Okay, and now it's ten o'clock, so gentlemen, we, we don't get a take a coffee break thanks to J.C., but we'll take one after a while. So, do you gentlemen like to, if you'd like to step up, you were gonna do a little bit more detailed research, and maybe we could take a look at, um, what you brought us so we can make a little more intelligent decision?
I don't know about that, just take it...
Huh?
More intelligent.
Little, I said little. Ems is on little.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ems.
Thank you very much.
Maybe a little more informacy.
Is that what you're talking about?
Maybe more aligned, you think? Okay. Yes, just stand right up there where the microphone is, and everybody can hear.
All right, thank you, commissioners, for allowing John's control to come back and present, uh, what we discussed a couple of weeks ago in revising the cash flow analysis and also, um, a breakout for each energy conservation measures that, that you requested on the second page. After we left, uh, a couple, two-thirds ago, Bob, my engineer and myself, went down to Upshur County Library. Um, we did a walk-through of the library. The following Monday, I talked with the, um, the business manager down at the library, um, and was able to, she sent me, uh, right away, the utility billing for one-year period and, uh, for the library. Uh, the library has its own boards, as we're all aware of, and they pay the utilities to, um, Pennelec, or West Penne, excuse me, Pennelec. So from there, from our walk-through and reviewing that data, uh, they spend the same, about eight to ten cents per kilowatt, uh, for electricity as does the county. And what we were able to find out is that by just looking at the lighting at the library, uh, we're looking at a savings almost of six thousand dollars, extra six thousand dollars a year from what we had before. Unfortunately, that amount of savings still does not help us out in reference to, um, the capital cost avoidance that's required to do this type of project, uh, on the first page. We're looking at a total project savings now, uh, just utility-based over fifteen years of five hundred and ninety, uh, almost five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Um, and also total savings over the life of the term, approximately of five hundred and ninety-five thousand, with a balance, uh, at the year end of a fifteen-year term of fifty-one thousand. So, the, the square footage there is a nice-sized square footage, but again, with the utility cost being some of the lowest in the country, second lowest in the country, um, three or four years ago, we're talking eleven, twelve cents a kilowatt. Now we're talking eight, nine cents a kilowatt. It makes a huge difference in utility savings.
Could that change, though, because of the, we're getting most of our energy now from coal, correct? Could that change in the future with regards to legislation which, or executive orders which are currently pending, that will impact the ability to use coal, which West Virginia's abundant?
Yeah.
What's the projected term on that aspect? Because it might cost more per kilowatt-hour than it currently does.
Correct. We always take into account, we look at the, the progressive, excuse me, the years out on NYMEX, what they expect to have, the utility costs are, and we have an escalation of almost three percent built in each year. So that can, if, you know, I understand what you're saying, because I had my measurement verification guy, a gentleman down in, um, our Nitro office, look into that. And it could go up, but we can't base it on right now. If it does go up, that's great. It'll help you further down the road with the savings. But based on the facts, we know right now, today, uh, we are not in business of projecting futures. Uh, we just take into account the escalation of three, up to almost three percent based on, uh, that is what it usually goes up, uh, each year in regards to their, their public utilities overhead.
Well, and it's possible also with the natural gas abundance, there might be more plants as a shutdown coal would go online with natural gas, which...
Yes.
...have a neutralizing effect, or maybe a, I don't know, not enough to lower the cost, but...
The reality is, the, uh, CFI inflation over fifty, sixty years at half is two point eight percent. And then you bring that back down to the past five, six years, um, the price of natural gas, we all know, has done this. Now it's kind of going to say, electric went down slightly. It's projected to go back up, but not greatly for a while, not with natural gas being used and coal mixed together. It's too lucky right now.
With the abundance of gas, based on what we have, is a big backlog of gas also.
Is what?
There's a backlog of gas within the distribution systems.
Right.
Because of the mild winters we have. Uh, most of the gas, it's not as much per se as in Pennsylvania. And West Virginia, I think, more gas is used at a lot of the sites for manufacturing and/or, uh, the coal sites also.
Well, for years, uh, the pipelines brought gas, uh, from Texas, and now it's going from West Virginia to Texas.
It's opposite now, yes, because they're selling it to other countries, yeah.
Right, so, and they're discovering more and more zones that are, that are down deeper, so it's, it's hard to tell what kind of reserve. I, I saw something somewhere, I think, just on the Marcellus.
Mm-hmm.
They're saying it's a hundred-year reserve for the United States, just on that one sand. And now they found the Utica, which is oil and wet gas. So, I mean, that's great.
Yes, Utica's a little further, uh, west from here, that, that part of the shell within the, our earth. Um, but the Marcellus shell, from, from it being such a bigger business here before it wasn't Western Pennsylvania.
Right.
Uh, there's a lot of, there's more of that right now, and a big abundance of it also.
So, so back to this, so you're saying the, the recommended changes, uh, in the courthouse, the annex and extension office, um, would be ninety-one, over ninety-one thousand, always ninety?
Correct. That's, that's a estimate based on how we calculate the estimate, based on square footage of these, of each facility that we received from the clerk's office. Also based on, uh, for the courthouse, uh, the permit we're looking to make, it was based on, um, replacing, uh, the roof, but, and uplifting, uh, the equipment off the roof with, uh, put it on steel beams. And that's how we get the cost associated with almost ninety-two thousand, an estimated cost, a hundred thousand foot level cost for each one of these energy conservation measures.
Now, the, uh, the...
Excuse me, I was talking about the chiller, I apologize.
Right. The, the courthouse, uh, did you have a, or you said, refresh my memory on the situation we have at the courthouse, where our highest gas bills in May and June, and...
Yes.
Did you do some more research on that, uh?
Yes, I, yes. Um, uh, we spoke with Mr. Riley again, and what we found, it's the same, pretty much nothing has changed. Uh, you're, what you're trying to do, what, you know what you're trying to do. What's actually happening is you're, to, to, um, cool the building down, you have to turn on the gas to, uh, get rid of the condensation and also use more electric to heat, to heat the, uh, to cool the building in the summertime. That's why the costs in the summer months are higher, because there's a condens, condensation level, as you're well aware, within that facility. So, the only way we're looking at, of fixing it is, is adding VFDs and also air balancing. TAB is air balancing to resolve that issue to lower the gas cost, uh, especially in the warmer, the cooler months of the year where it's higher than it is in the winter months. And that's not, no fault of any contractor or any engineer. That's just the way that building, it's an older building, um, as you're well aware, the walls are all one-foot to two-foot, the shell of that building is all concrete. And it would be very costly when they made the improvements to start drilling through those walls and cause structural issues, where then the resolve was actually the flex duct pipe above, uh, the courthouse chambers, which is, it could be ways of it losing air there, but the, the, the way the building was designed years ago and way it's constructed, and it's typical for a lot of courthouses throughout West Virginia. Uh, they're aged, the, um, ventilation, if it's not taken up through the floors from the woodside, uh, and most of them are concrete floors, it's hard to put in the proper duct work to justify, um, the cost of, of going through walls and, um, making it more affordable for the, uh, gas usage.
So the twenty-nine thousand, that, that would be to do exactly what?
That's at, uh, for the library? That's just...
Uh, the, uh, annex.
Oh, the, um...
Because I was thinking that you said it just needed, uh, recalibrated. You're saying it needs some...
Oh, yes. Yeah, we have to do...
You're saying it needs some more...
Oh, yeah, we're looking at VFDs, some major improvement with the, a variable, uh, flow devices right before where the ductwork comes down, where it comes in. So it can, right now it's running twenty-four, seven all the time, or when they set the system down, it's grown, during the day it's running all the time. With the VFDs, you can control the amount, the temperature and amount of air coming in. So you're not constantly using gas to, to get rid of the humidity. You're more using, uh, more control of both heat and the gas to, uh, come through the ductwork within each, um, where you have, uh, the, um, outlets in each room.
So you're not, you don't have as much damp air coming in. You're controlling the amount of damp air coming in, which reduces your, your heating time to, to take the moisture, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Now, but, and the tab, what exactly was that?
Air, go ahead, Bob.
Air balance?
Air balancing? Testing air balance, yeah.
And what exactly is involved in that?
For this facility, it's making sure that, uh, you're getting a proper flows to every ductwork. It goes back, starting at the air handler, always the user, and, um, measuring the airflow as it was originally designed, making sure you're still getting the same airflow down. And then if, and then if it is not evenly dispersed, the dampers and our actuators are adjusted, controlled differently, so that you get the proper airflow everywhere. It's to make sure the building is made, is comfortable in all areas. You're not getting more air in one area than you should, and less air in others. Um...
Which can...
The VFDs and the annex and testing air balance, it works together to reduce the amount of airflow, maintain proper levels of fresh air in the building, and at the same time, reduce the energy consumption of the fans, two fans that are in there, and also the, um, reduce the amount of chilled water that's necessary to cool the building and gas to heat it in the summer time as well. It's, uh, slowing, slowing the system, the delivery system down, the fans, and making a more comfortable system again. It's a constant volume system, which is very typical back in the late eighties, I think, eighty-nine or so.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah.
Newer buildings from the mid-nineties on up, and renovated buildings, now have variable airflow VAD with these VFD units. Um, it's just a device, like I explained before, it just slows the air down, uh, maybe by twenty to forty percent, but it's a multiplying effect on the fan motors, where they save fifty percent of the energy on the electrical side, a little bit of gas, energy plus gas, less cooling as well, requirements for the electric, so it all adds up. Um, it's a very standard renovation, um, chemical system, and you've got good controls now already, just take a handful of stuff, not a lot of controls, it's just a few mechanical pieces that you can go through.
Say, now, we should have talked about the courthouse?
The, just the annex, just the annex.
The courthouse is the re-commissioning of the existing controls that are there for the gas and the cooling side. The cooling, um, what's going on at the courthouse again is, um, the air is not circulating as well as it should. I think it's, um, excuse my cold. It's, um, the air is saturated, and you can feel it with the humidity issue that you've got over there. I just walked through now, seems much better because the air is drier. Um, it's a combination of making sure enough outside air is getting in, you're not letting areas stay stagnant with the air. And like David said, you want to turn off the, uh, the gas boilers in the summertime, which is what you said, maybe June, the two highest bills followed by January.
June, July.
I think August kicked in again. Um, it's about, it's like about four to five thousand dollars worth of ventriloquy that should be occurring. Hey, that, that curve, it's a bell curve. January is here, bells up here, the other month should be very well. Um, it's not, you've got two curves, if you're a member of the regional chart. Um, it's going in and ensuring that everything is opening, closing current, closing items, what are not supposed to be on or off. I, I have to really assume a lot of those, there were units down the basement, I forget how many, they were seventeen or something.
Yeah, eighteen to twenty.
Okay. Um, I don't believe we need to begin doing any cooling with those units down now. They should just be recycling air a little bit, probably outside more than they are right now. I believe they're getting too much cooling to the building, and that just saturates the, uh...
Air.
That's the, that's the humidity, relative humidity that you're having. Um, that helps it.
So you're saying recalibrate what's there, not add any additional...
You call it recalibration, re-commissioning, it's the same thing.
It won't require any equipment, per se, adding up to that system.
It would require some extra sensors to monitor the equipment a little bit better. And, um, Eric Riley and I discussed that. I agree. So he wants to see, um, relative humidity sensors in more, in more areas. I agree. If that's your issue, let's measure it. Let's find out why it is, what it is. And let's focus it, let's narrow it down to where that problem is. It's like a water leak. You got a water leak in the main, you start at the far edge, you keep working down till you find it, same with this building. I just want to put some sensors in, some monitors, and with the equipment that you have, you probably already monitor the temperature, and by that we can start to notice what's going on there. If they trend it, if they aren't doing it now, it's not difficult to do. Um, and again, we're not talking of ripping out what's there. And a few things to improve it. Uh, it's probably more of a, a real in-depth maintenance issue than it is of replacing it. Because you've got new showers, new boilers, new pumps. They're all working, obviously, just a little too much at times. Need to work together better. Uh, but obviously, I report that should help me out in the summertime. That's, and that's not a very large one, that's twenty-five odd dollars, but it'd be...
Mm-hmm, twenty-four thousand, I know.
We're not talking about a lot of area. So I don't think something's been done in two or three weeks, maybe. That's the most good investigation of what's going on there. I think it's a necessary.
Okay, so, uh, you're, what you're saying is, the total cost of everything you've listed is a six hundred and seventy thousand, right?
That's correct.
And the saving... And the savings now, that $32,000, is that annual savings or the cost of the total? Well, that would have to be annual.
Yeah, that's annual for each one.
And now, what's the difference between the simple payback and the payback over time?
It's just adding up. A simple payback is your cost divided by the first-year savings. The payback over time, which some people like to look at, is the 15 years over the total investment cost of the I, because over time, your savings is going up with inflation.
Oh, okay.
It's more of an average savings into the total.
More of a realistic picture.
Some people like to see that, but they have an argument they were true.
It's more of a realistic.
It really is.
Yes.
It is. It is all based on your escalation rate.
Right.
Again, just to make sure you understand, that's 670-odd thousand is our, is the estimate at this point. I think it'll be somewhere around there, based on historical perspective. The largest conversation that we had with our group was the chiller costs. And that's with mounting the new unit on steel above the existing roof right now, re-roof, fix anything that's inside there. Sure, there's a few things that need to be worked out. New piping, it'll be an air-cooled chiller as opposed to water-cooled, so you don't have that large water base up there any longer. But again, there's our, we have a lot of risk in that, although let's just leave it at that right now, because we haven't, we haven't, we haven't done any tides, we haven't dug any holes, we haven't, we have piping issues. Piping should be okay coming out to the site, it's just the actual.
What he means by digging holes, he means looking up into the ceiling.
Any, any questions? So your summation of all this is what?
All right. There is a energy performance contract, is a one-way to go about doing this. What we have provided is the, there's a capital cost avoidance each year. It was higher before, now it's $20,000 a year, based on including the public lib, or excuse me, the county library's utility cost. And it'll be some negotiation between the public library board and the county commission itself to bring those costs together in regards to paying for the utility data or how we're going to separate the savings out. Now, from there, it's still a project that, over a 15-year term, with positive savings throughout the 15 years, it's just the, like I said before, when I first here, about a month, or excuse me, when I first here, two months ago, based on the square footage, I was predicting that maybe we can do a project without a capital cost avoidance. Again, I can't, just based on the utility cost, it's not going to be feasible to have it with no dollars coming from the county itself. So that's where that, all of this, when you do performance contract, it's a budgeted line item. So, and doing a municipal lease does not hurt the county in regards to borrowing power. It's counted as a single line item on your yearly financial budget. It would not hurt your bonding power, would not hurt your borrowing power with a third-party municipal lease. And based on 15 years, we're looking at, as of two days ago, the interest rates were around 3%, 2.95 to 3.15 for financing these types of projects. And it's a doable project. It's up to the county commission to decide how about, they want to go about doing it in regards to performance contract or design-build-based perspective.
And explain just a little more the difference between those two as far as power perspective?
All right. An energy performance contract is based on quality and value, meaning get the most efficient equipment for the highest value for maintenance over the life of the term of the equipment. Better equipment lasts longer, it's more efficient, less cap, maintenance, excuse me, operational savings involved. With a bid-and-spec method, your traditional way of doing stuff, you have to work with an engineer or architect, do some design, design work and do the specifications for it. That's another cost that's involved. Plus, you're not really, it's based on more open bidding, based on price per se, not really quality or value. And the biggest difference is the guarantee for the first, how many years? Five years, we have guaranteed savings, first four years guaranteed savings, where if we don't meet that prospective savings, the John's Controls, the Energy Performance Contract Company is responsible for covering the difference. Per se, like, we have a total savings of $34,991 in year three. If we only save $30,000, only save $25,000, that difference has to come out of John's Controls' profit or pockets.
You pay the.
That paid a difference to the debt service for the county.
I think it's also on the bid-and-spec. You may not get the, you may not get the equipment that you want to put in, whereas with performance contract, you tell us what equipment you would like, we can offer this, that. And you decide what equipment. You also have a lot of input on who does the work. Obviously, it's going to be insured, monitored, and that. It's your decision who to use. The lighting typically, those are, that's about a standard lighting company, that's a group that we use around the country. In here, I read a pump, 200 pumps a year, that there are groups around the country that know what to do with just that, and it'll move really fast, and it'll go up. But for the mechanical, electrical side, it would involve local, mechanical, local, electrical, that it would be that, because we still have to go through our own maintenance reviews, and safety management, and warranty management to say, okay, have we gotten the three bits? Have we qualified them? Which does the customer want to use? The customer can decide to use the higher bid because they like that person better. It's their choice, it's your choice. But we have to do that just for our own governance. It keeps everybody on the.
And for the general public, an energy performance contract, the West Virginia State Energy Legislation states that we were like the program manager for, for the county commission.
Well, what about in a situation like this, say, say with the, say the lighting at the library?
Mm-hmm.
Let's say we did that, we went through this process, but we said we want our maintenance crews to change the lights.
Okay.
And how's that affect everything? You still guarantee the savings?
I'm sorry, if your own people, if all the system, if you buy the products you put it in?
Or are you saying that we buy it and then they put it in?
Well, it doesn't matter. I'm just saying if our people do it, then you still guarantee the savings?
That would not, I'm sorry, Bob. Excuse me.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, you said, okay, in order to guarantee these savings, you have to use this type of light.
That's correct.
We would provide it, which is fairly straightforward.
Right.
And if you wish to put it in, yes, you would certainly cut back on the cost of installing it, and you can roll the savings in.
That's, that's more of a positive, yes. It cuts, there's, right there is some savings from that line item of, of almost $30,000. There'd be no construction cost. So right there, you're saving.
But, but the question is.
We can still guarantee it, though.
Is your savings not based on the cost, it's saved on the projected energy reduction?
That's certain.
So you would still guarantee, like in this case, you're saying the savings would be $5,500?
That's correct, yeah.
So it doesn't matter if, if our people do it and say it costs 12, 15,000?
You're on the right track.
Yes.
We also do a pre- and post-plotage measurement of a certain selection of the fixtures. There's 100 of these in the building, you do those, there's two of those, you don't bother with those. So you make sure that the savings that you estimated are correct. They usually within one or two percent, which is depends upon the voltage in the building more than the amps. I see where you're going with that. It's not a bad idea. It's a good idea. All I ask is that we be involved in the zone.
Excuse me.
And project manage to make sure there's no issues with what is installed, which to be honest with you, we should very straightforward.
Right.
You're just taking out the ballast and putting in a new light.
Very standard operation. The biggest issue with that is basically just making sure it gets done, it gets done at the time.
Right.
Where we see, when I, we have our price there for each one of those estimated costs for each energy conservation measure. That cost includes the install plus the equipment.
Right. Okay.
And those savings are based on square footage costs. At this point, the library could be higher or lower. I think a library should be higher because they have.
It's over, it's overlaid.
Anyway. And there's some hot, you can probably say some more, so we're looking at 13, 14 right now. It'd be higher, it could be higher.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody? I think we've got a lot of information to look at and consider, so we appreciate your help.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, Kevin and Megan, or contact me directly, we'll be able to fill in the blanks for you.
Will do. Thanks now.
Thank you now.
Safe trip back.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I thought you, I thought that was resignation. Jackie just gave me some information that I think would be appropriate, which is the recognition, recognition, not resignation, recognition of Debbie Thacker Wilfong, 40-year employment with the county on October the 1st. So there you go. Hey, you could do her one of your little stories. There you go. Just tilt your camera down a little higher. So a congratulation to Debbie for 40 years. No wonder she's short, she's wore down after 40 years, isn't she?
That's an accomplishment.
Accomplishment.
Anything in today's world.
Debbie, congratulations. We'll congratulate her in our policy board meeting after a while also. Maybe we'll have to bake her a little cake, Megan. Okay. Let's see, what else do we have? We're going to talk to the sheriff about to ride along. I think we're, I think we're down through. Do you have anything else?
Bills.
I think that comes to.
Bills, bills, bills.
I think that covers it, the bills.
Bills, bills. Okay, well, we'll pay our bills.